All right. I'm going to call this Grand County Board of Commissioners meeting in order on January 17th, 2023. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of such conflict. And further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Mr. County Director.
Good day, and Father, just thank you for everything that you do for us. And Father, we ask that you just continue just to be with us. Father, we just ask that you just guide us in our thoughts and just do the best that we can for our county. And Father, we ask that you just reach out lovingly and touch him hand in hand for those who are sick and ill in our county and just continue just to comfort those who sit. And Father, we ask for all your blessings. And Father, we just lift up our prayers to you. And Father, we're just so thankful for everything that you do for us. In your precious and holy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Mills. Number 5A, we need at 5A, Melanie Garuthy, Life Choice Pregnancy Center for Western North Carolina. Item number 7A, Commissioner Orr, she's going to be discussing the sheriff equipment needs. Under discussion items at 8, at the bottom, a new old business. We have some old business with Ronnie Williams, our recreation director. And we had several items of new business come in today that I'll go over at the end, if that's pleasing with the board.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Any discussion? Do I have a second? On paper.
Yes. So I just sit right here and tell you what to do?
You can go stand at the mic. I made a pro of a minutes of a workshop during the meeting on December 20th and especially on December 13th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? On paper. For George.
Just a moment, I'll turn the mic off. Okay. Apologies.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to introduce, well, excuse me, just a little bit. Thank you for allowing me to introduce to you our pregnancy center. We are called Life Choice Pregnancy Center of Western North Carolina. We are based in Bryson City presently, and we've not been around that long. We've been around over a year, but we've been working at it for about three years. We officially opened about a year and three months ago. And our purpose is to help young families, especially those in crisis pregnancy. We offer resources. We offer education. We offer mentoring, peer counseling, support. And our young people that come to us are offered education through parenting classes, maternity classes. And by attending these classes and just coming and talking with us, they earn points. And the points are part of what is what we call Earn While You Learn program. And so while they are attending and adding up points as they come, when they come on time, we give them more points. If they achieve something with their lives as far as perhaps graduating high school, getting a GED, college diploma, driver's license, we'll give them more points. And all these points are used sort of like money where they can purchase resources that they need. Now, we're very generous with them. We give diapers, we give wipes, and we give many little things. But as far as their main goals, as far as achieving resources, they earn points and they purchase them. For instance, they can get baby swings or lots of things like high chairs, cribs, changing tables, the things they need. And our goal is to give them support and to ease their fears. We seek to be a safe haven in times of crisis so that our clients have peace about the situation they're in. And we hope to help them grow in responsibility as well as giving them a safe place and a place of comfort, especially as regards raising their children. Our goal is to see healthy, happy families, and we help to give them a good start. We've not been around that well, but I've been passionate about this ministry for many, many years. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, registered in the state of North Carolina. Oracles of incorporation are here, and of course, we do have an EIN number and are registered with the federal government. Our main goal is to provide a safe place for families to start out because our goal is to see healthy, happy communities. And without giving our young people a place to start where they feel that they can accomplish something, then they're not going to get off to a right start. And we all know what happens. I don't have to go into details. Swing County and Graham County fight to be the largest in teen pregnancy as far as statistics in the state of North Carolina. Now, we have been given a wonderful opportunity. Not only do we have space in Bryson City, and by the way, it's wonderful that we are expanding from our tiny office to a huge place right now where we have a beautiful baby boutique we're about to start building to showcase our offerings, our resources. But Michelle Shiplett, the Liberty Missionary Church, has offered us a space in our, it's a, I understand it's a nonprofit designation, and the office space that she has given us where we are going to be in Graham County now, in Robbinsville, for one day each week. And that, right now, we've decided Wednesday is a good day for that. So our hours are now nine to one over there on the five-point road. But also, we are also available by appointment. So if somebody cannot come in at that time, we will arrange to have another time that they can meet. And we're very excited about that. And we knew for, now, ever since we started with Life Choice in Bryson City, we knew that we had to also work in this part of Western North Carolina. It was, I can't explain it, it was a feeling I had that we need to be here as well. And we talked to a lot of people in Graham County, and they were very excited about that. And so somehow, we have had the doors open, and we're here. We are here. As of last Wednesday, I started moving in. Tomorrow, I'll be moving in more to get everything set up in our office space there. Do you have any questions? I'm rambling a little, but do you, I brought these brochures because we are moving in Bryson City right now, too. I had to make up some new brochures, but I'm going to give each of you one of these. And these are still our old business cards, but our phone number is on there if you'd like to contact us at the office. And if you need, I will give you my private cell phone number as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
Yeah, but thank you for coming.
Definitely, it's definitely a resource that we need in Graham County. No doubt. I'm glad to hear that you're coming. If we can do anything to assist, do let us know if you will give us Chris your information and reach out to us either.
Awesome, thank you. Can I hand these out to you now?
That's good. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to be nine to one. Now, tomorrow morning, because my car broke down, I have had something dropped on me also, I'm not sure what time, because I'm dependent on someone else tomorrow. But our regular hours are going to be nine to one every Wednesday.
Okay, nine to one every Wednesday?
Except for tomorrow.
Except for today, okay.
But we will, we will be available by appointment at other times. And we can make appointments in Bryson City, too, if anyone is traveling with that. Right. All right, thank you. Do you need more information, Colonel? I'm here to come home from whenever you're proud. Okay, awesome. Yeah, so I'm going to go then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. This is, oh, I'm sorry, he's on our board at Life Choice, and he drove me out here and I was like, oh.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. You go.
Okay, so as part of my finance report, we have our auditors on the phone. As you know, they're, they head first in the taxis, and so they're calling in from Murphy to give their report. I gave you a preliminary report last minute that under LGC guidelines, they are required to give a report within 60 days of the issuance of the audit report. So Holly, can you hear me?
I can, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Good. So we're ready when you are.
Okay, baby, were you able to send the PDF? I know it was going to my office to you.
They have a copy, I meant to say that. They have a copy in front of them.
Okay, well, thank you again for letting us call in. We do appreciate it. And if you do have that pamphlet in front of you or if you look at it, it's first again a three section, just so you know, the 10 pages. The first two pages are basically our summaries, where we take the 127-page PDF of the actual audit report, and we break that down into just two pages for you, sort of like the highlights. And then the second, the page three or five, is the required auditor's communication. This is a letter, it's basically a form letter where we're wrapping up the engagement. And then the last one is the performance indicators, and it's for the board members who were on the board in April, when how we did the presentation then. We went over the new names that LGC is requiring, and they're, which is the audit. So, and I think, baby, you've already gone over the FDI, which is the financial performance indicators that's done, and you've already got the letter ready for LGC. Is that correct, Becky?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you will see, okay, Lauren, and I'm not going to go in detail on this because I know a hurry again, that's why I need something to do. But you did have three findings. We did find three issues in the audit this year. One was the audit was late, which it was submitted a week after the deadline, and that had to do with the new implementation of PSC 87, which I didn't know if we were all going to survive the latest implementation. And that's our update.
That would be correct.
And then the second issue was at the jail, which I understand has already been corrected as of now, which was, there was an issue where the, they were not keeping up with the inmate funds. And then over at Medicaid, whenever we did the testing at Medicaid, we tested 91 files, and out of one of those files, there was only one issue, and which I think is pretty good, you know, but one issue with a not sending something to Baratop or Chalk Fork. And, and I, it's my understanding, I think that has already been corrected as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they implemented a training program.
I'm sorry, did you hear that, baby?
I'm sorry, they, they implemented, they worked with the state and implemented a training program, and the state signed off on it and said they were good.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And so another good job on no budget violation, so that's good. And we like to understand a lot of activity, that county seems to be growing, which is positive. And I do want to say thank you to Juanita, the Transit Department, when five of us came and basically sat up there for a week, they were very considerable, and they put up with us, and we do appreciate that. And also, Becky, for working with us, and would just thank you for that. And the last thing I wanted to say, you'll see on the page two, that do thank for that letter to be submitted to the local government, which Becky already has ready, is March 18th, so you'll be well within that deadline. And do you have any questions for me?
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. But thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Okay, and just so you know, I'm here anytime you have a question later, just give me a call.
All right.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to point out on page two, because you're going to hear about this a lot, and budget is your fund balance percentage, and we're still hanging out there at 45%. So we're in a very healthy position going into this year, which was a good thing because we've had a lot of things we needed to get done and handle. And that's given us that reserve to be able to make those outlays that were required, and also that needed to be done. I do have the unit letter ready, and I think Manager Chris has that as a part of your new and old business discussion items. So I would like, if possible, to be able to go ahead and upload that so that the LGC can know that we've done what we need to do. Okay, any questions? You have any? Okay, I'll answer the finance report for the, we are at mid-year, believe it or not, about 31. So I'll go through what our results were for the month of December and for the six months ended December 31. You'll notice on page one that our cash balance at the end of December reconciled was, that includes our capital management trust and our general fund checking in United Community Banks, $10,447,115. I always like to see us get about $10 million for a minute. And that's when it happens, for a minute. But you'll see, we made a big jump from the November cash balance. We are a little bit lower than this time last year, but again, we've made some big, big expenditures this year for items that needed to be taken care of and handled, so I'm not going to complain about that because we've done what we said we would do with our budget. You'll notice on our capital projects, for capital management trust, we are a little over $3.1 million in that account now. This time last year, we were at $2.3 million. So we have made some significant strides. Part of that difference in the cash balance is movement into that account. The school capital project is hanging out there, a little less than $116,000. American Rescue Plan, we're still at $903. And then our SCF courthouse grant, we were at $5,076,983. We made $16,000 in interest this past month. Just so excited.
As compared to whatever was last year?
Oh, absolutely. It's awesome. We did get $27,000, a little bit over $27,000. All those capital management trust accounts in the ARPA account. So we made, this is not counting on the other accounts, the general funds that were, but we've made $133,000 in interest. It's gone into these accounts, of which most of that is coming into that courthouse account. And you'll see why I'm really excited about that here in just a few minutes. Page three, I've got it highlighted in green and yellow. You'll see our tax collections for the month of December were $2,685,512. That's current year taxes. That does include the Brookfield payment, which is a little over a million, too. And then we got back taxes in $9,426 for a total tax collection of $2,694,939. DMV is still tracking a little bit below this time last year, but a lot of that's because people are not buying new cars, they're buying used cars. So that amount is going to be depressed just a little bit because those values coming through for taxation are a little bit lower. So we had $41,226 in the TES. If you look on page four, you'll see that we are, our tax collection rate is at 79.54. This time last year, it was 86.42. And at first, I was like, but then I started looking at the levy numbers. Our levy's a little bit higher, which is going to push that percentage collection rate down some. So our levy's a little less than 7.3. We're $113,000 ahead in tax collections for the year on the real side, and a little less than 2,100 lower on the VTS side. So I was glad to see because we've been hanging out there a little bit lower in our collections this, this year, so thankfully, we're catching up there. On page five, you'll see our operating results for the general fund. Our revenues in the general fund were $3,009,47,540. That's a little bit higher than this time last year, at $3.8 million. Our expenditures are $1,845,625. So we have an operating surplus of $2,101,915. That's the last, you may see some, you'll see some surplus there for January probably, but then it will slide down, it'll go down the hill there. You'll see, so far on page six in the green, you will see that we, we've got a surplus going into the slide of $1,688,822. So I'm glad to have that surplus. Any questions so far? Okay, on page seven, you've got your sales tax numbers. We received, this is exclusive of the quarter cent, $266,740, just a little bit lower than last month, a little bit lower than last year. But if you were, oh, this fall got cold real quick, so our occupancy's still hanging out there about level with this time last year. But you'll see that weather does have an impact. Of course, inflation has offset that somewhat. We have collected in sales tax this year to date, $1,624,846. And I highlighted that because if you look over, now, this is year today, you look across the page to about 15, 16, 14, 15, we were getting a million and a half, million and four for the whole year. So having this additional sales tax has been, inflation is not a good thing, but having an extra sales tax has given us a little more flexibility. We have had a, we've had about 125% growth over the past decade. An annual growth for the month for this year to date so far is 26%. The quarter cent sales tax, 26,782,67 at the bottom of the page, that's how much we received this month. And of course, last month, I shifted moving into our capital management trust month. Any questions? Okay, next page is just your, what you got outstanding in tax back taxes. And then capital projects so far to date, I updated that this evening. We spent $1,686 all total on all the projects that we've got going. Finally, the Recreation and Cemetery building are about evening themselves out. And our county match so far on these middle school has been $1,198,000. I have one more regular payout to pay that I know of. I just got that money in last week. And then I'm thinking, if what I'm understanding is correct, there'll be a retained that will come out. Of course, that'll be county dollar, be 25% of that, and then state dollar will be 75%. I told the board last month, we talked about the general conditions. I did not get a chance to really analyze those numbers because I was waiting on what the December payout was going to look like. So I'm going to be paying those bills, if not tomorrow, on Thursday, and I'll have a better feel about that $88,000 after I pay that bill. So I will let, let the board know about that. Any questions? Okay, on the budget, budget's looking, okay, we should have 50% of our budget. If you turn to the last page, you'll see we're running right within budget, 52%. We do have, I have a couple of budget amendments. You'll see highlighted, it was the election board, I highlighted that last month. I met with the election folks the other day, so I'll have a budget amendment there. And then I'm anticipating, if you look on the third page, the senior center, they're running ahead of their budget. Food costs are killing them. So I'm going to schedule a meeting with that director this coming week as well, so we can analyze and see where we are on that. Others that are showing as hot spots, but are really not, is the swimming pool, that's a 17% left. But that's because we made the capital outlay for the upfit of the pool, and then that hole, but that budget's done for pretty much the year. And then the mini van replacement, that $224,996 is the amount of the vans, there'll be money left in that budget at the end of the year as well. Okay, any questions? And I do want to say another thanks to our tax collection department because they really, they've had a real few weeks in getting all these taxes collected. I do, as I mentioned, I do have a couple of budget amendments. The first budget amendment relates to the health department. The state has allocated $70,901 in youth mental health funding, of which it'll be a pass through, which I need to just need to recognize that. And then which funding, they provided another $636 for a total budget amendment of $71,537, of which there'll be no county dollar outlay.
Do I have a motion to approve budget amendment nine and 10?
I need to tell you about 10.
Oh, okay.
Budget amendment 10 doesn't relate to the election board, as I said, I sat down and met with Juanita and Teresa last week, and we tried to project out, this budget amendment is required or necessary, I should say, due to the Santitla tax appeal. We had quite a bit in attorney fees. We paid out $15,000, that sort of attorney fees. If I understand correctly, there will be another hearing on this before the year end, and could be additional legal costs beyond that. And then we also have additional costs for personnel related to the appeal, as well as board meetings related to the appeal. And then on top of that, layer on top of that, we had to have the runoff for the sheriff race. So there was additional election expenses required for that. So that being said, I'm glad that we have the extra sales tax because I can avail myself of that pot of money, but I do need to add about $48,400 to that budget.
Is this $27,500 reflecting the total amount?
That includes the total attorney fees we're projecting. That includes the $15,000.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve budget amendment nine and 10?
Second.
On paper.
Okay, I then I have two more quick items. You'll notice I put a page out that's multicolored like this. This is our new EMS Medicare allowable billing rates for 2023 that federal government finally came down with those last week. These are, we have to set our billing at the Medicare prevailing rate so that we can bill all of our other third parties at those higher rates as well that are Medicare, in order to be in compliance of Medicare as well. So, and then this does not include the additional out-of-county fee, the 300 that we add on if someone is not from the county. We are still considered to be supermood, so that means that we get $13.20 a mile that's reimbursed, which helps to fund our EMS. And so I would need a board approval or a board motion to adopt these rates so that our billing company can bill at the Medicare prevailing rate.
Motion to adopt these rates.
Motion to adopt these rates for family purchases.
Do I have a second? On paper.
Okay, and then I have one more item that's related to finance. And that is I came to the board last week in reference to the architect fees. We did get those contracts signed pre-audited. And I do have the first billing of ninety thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, which will come out of the SCIF account. So I would need more approval to pay this bill way above my standard rating.
An architect, architecture inclusion to approve that payment of ninety thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars.
Do I have a second? Second, on paper.
Okay, thank you. And I will, I've got some C D B G updates, but part of it's privileged and confidential. So I'll need to go into closed session in reference to those grants. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? About the comment. Mr. Ortiz.
Okay, there for New Justice Center, downtown. Do my best not to repeat anything I talked about a couple of months ago. A lot of study work has been done. And you probably remember the two studies, the Gray Mansion in Robbinsville, the gateway to Graham County. Those reports were put out after about a year's worth of study, meetings, seminars, open sessions, discussions with the general population. I think they tried to interview everybody in the county or talk to many of them. They went away, they came back, reviewed it again. And basically the main thing is the conclusion is the importance of maintaining downtown, making a viable downtown, maintaining the government offices in downtown. Those government offices were taken out, they were just destroyed downtown. One comment about Fort Hill, that area of this, it's an historic valley because I think the wording here, this is from the, this is from the University of North Carolina Research Laboratory. It said, "The location of Fort Hill, Montgomery's living history is the start of the trade of tears. The area has a significant historical record and should be preserved." That's a quote, "Because much of Fort Hill," this is a quote, "because much of Fort Hill remains an undeveloped agricultural space. E N P is likely that some architectural evidence for the fort occupation remains intact and the site possibly constitutes the best preserved removal area of Fort location in north and southwest North Carolina." And they go on to recommend careful excavation. So to me, that is a real possibility of a tourist area, a tourist historical attraction. So it would be another thing to bring people into Graham County other than just motorcycles. We need all we can get by those. I put together these sketches. Now, I'm an engineer, but I'm certainly an artist. Basically what I've done, I overlaid on the first one. The space I think might be taken by the Justice Center on Ford Street. Again, it's got its frontage on onto Courthouse Square. The body of the building will be on Ford Street. It has access from Ford Street for all of the services and for all of the employees, police personnel, everybody else. I put in a simple sketch, front view sketch, what it might look like from Courthouse Square. And I showed some kind of an elevation of what it might look like. The first floor entrance to the building would be on on Courthouse Square. And this concept was being done before. I didn't know before, but apparently there was a store located exactly as I'm suggesting here, with its frontage on Courthouse Square. And then several stores built down below the below the road. It's Helen's, so and so, somebody probably remembered before my time. So the concept is, in fact, that's how that gap in the Courthouse Square came. I guess that building was destroyed, I don't know how. But anyway, I think I've gone over a lot of this stuff before with you anyway. One important thing is that the front of the building is, of course, the main part of the building. But the back end of the building is the part that actually are going to be seen more than anything because it's going to be sticking out over that area. And it'll be visible from the bypass and from anywhere in that part of Robbinsville. So that needs to be really architecturally present too. And it'll be impressive. People will look up and they'll see it standing up there. It'll really give, I think, a good impression of Robbinsville's commitment to downtown. It'll take away the comments that I've heard in the past, the ghost town. It looks like the back of the building, the ghost town. I put together, basically, the same document I handed out last time. Updated it, reviewed it, and it's a lot of good information in here. It's research information, references. If I made a comment here, I'll try to cite where it came from. It's about ten pages, very worthy. I'll get more copy to the, hope she can copy you guys. And maybe if you can't sleep one night, you can read it, put yourself to sleep or whatever. But it is good, good information. Anybody considering where to locate the the Justice Center, really, if you're going to read this, it's got some in-depth and suggestive information.
Thank you, sir.
Except for me, I, any questions?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I asked to speak tonight about, well, an incident that happened in my neighborhood that I wasn't aware of when we had the last meeting when the sheriff came and shared with the board and whomever was here for the meeting, some of the needs of the sheriff department, some of the needs that the officers have. I learned that within the side of my home, there was a drug and theft ring bust. I had had probably my my step ladder that I used to climb in ridiculous places sometimes. But thankfully, the Lord can't mix up the safe from it. And and then just a couple of weeks ago, although it just lay on my cardboard for probably twenty, twenty-five years. No longer there. And I I thought, well, maybe one of the kids, the grandkids borrowed it. But it was probably up the road from the house. The the thing that concerned me most was that the officers who went in the early hours of the morning to this residence and in this bust, gave the criminals, unfortunately, an opportunity to make fun of them and laugh and make jokes about the way that their weapons were held together with zip ties, strings, ropes, wires. And I found that very disturbing and completely one hundred percent unacceptable. I have a list of the supplies that Sheriff Hoxton brought to us. It was seventeen rifles, thirteen vests, fifteen tasers and twenty-five radios. And that was in the, that amounted to some seventy-four, between seventy-four and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I come before the people here tonight, this board and Randy and our legal counsel. And I'm going to make a motion that we purchase these supplies that our sheriff department needs for the people that we are asking to go into harm's way to keep us safe. So and and also that we do everything in our power to keep them safe. We're in a war, folks. There is no, there is no way to explain the kind of war that we are in, not just in this county, but it's everywhere. And you've got to have some weapons to fight a war. So I'll make this motion that we purchase these items that have been brought to us as needed by the sheriff's department. And if if I could please ask Becky to elaborate just a little bit on source of funding that would be available to put these in place.
So if you recall, in the last board meeting, Commissioner Cody laid out a very strong case for using our L A T C F funding for assistance to our fire departments to get some very needed equipment. And that funding source is an unrestricted source of funds from the federal government to help offset the negative impact of COVID that was magnified on counties like we are because we have no tax base. And we got about four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars in October. That's the first tranche of that money. And when I, when I heard of the need, I started trying to figure out what pots of money could be available for that. And I felt like that if we're going to, what what the board could possibly do is say, okay, we're going to earmark money out of that first tranche to help with public safety. And that would be, and we still have to debate on that so we can figure out what those priorities are. But also that could be another use of that funds to help with our war against drugs and crime in this county. So that was my first impression of where we could pull those funds from would be that that money that the federal government, that's kind of, it is a win for all the counties. So we need to put it to the highest of its use and and not just let it be absorbed in the general fund operations, but but do some real good projects to help our citizens. And I can't think of any any other means more important than protecting our citizens. If they have a fire, protecting our citizens if somebody's breaking into their homes or if we got issues on Main Street. So that would be a source of, a good source of our use of that money.
And certainly the war on drugs.
All right, I got a motion to fund Sheriff Hoxton's request for the items that he requested at a previous meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that all you have, Commissioner?
That's all I have. Yes, thank you. And and thank you, gentlemen. Please stay safe.
I'd like to thank the board for approving this. This is really going to help with our equipment and supplies and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion items. We've got releases of four thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and eighteen seconds and discoveries of eleven thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars. How much to approve the releases and discoveries? No. Do I have a second? Then for the sanitation scale house roof.
Yeah, I've got it taped on there so I wouldn't lose it.
Okay.
Only have one. This is over the building, over their shed, over their actual office. The trailer. Yeah, the trailer.
And this is.
I get this one right this time.
Kelly Andrews Building and it is five thousand even. Do I have much to approve that bit?
Second.
On paper. We got some polls, you want to go over those polls?
Yeah, we had a sign waiver representation that was through Attorney Curriton and that was a unanimous vote. No disclosure regarding urgent care, that was the letter that went into the Grand Star. That was a unanimous vote. And pay for the sheriff department attorney, which is a yearly fee that we always pay that is over our spending limit and it was a unanimous vote.
Do I have much to approve this polls? A motion, do I have a second? On paper. All right, we need to approve the audit letter sent to Susan McCullen with the North Carolina Department of State Treasurer.
That's the one you just gave us.
The second.
Got a motion, the second, on paper. We've got some board appointments. Red point, Pam Shaker to the R D A board. Meredith Jenkins to the, do you want to go on one more? One at a time, one at a time. Pam Shaker to the R D A board, do I have much to approve that appointment?
Second.
On paper. Meredith Jenkins to the travel and tourism board. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
On paper. Keesha Green to the Southwestern Community Advisory Committee. A motion, do I have a second?
The second.
On paper. And transportation, what is that?
That is their Transportation Advisory Board. These are the members, there's eleven, I think, that sit on that board and these are the ones that are red appointed.
Okay, I've got Amy Say, Ginger Clayborne, Wanda Hill, Dennis Myers, Connie Yorn, Harold Phillips. Do I have much to approve these red appointments? Motion, second. On paper.
There was one more board appointment, we needed two. We have an opening at Travel and Tourism, on the Travel and Tourism Authority Board. And the board has recommended that we appoint Debbie Eller Alderman, Town Alderman. And I'll make, I'll make that motion.
That motion, do I have a second? David Beasley?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Motion. Do you want a second, take care of it? On paper. All right. I told you, it's right.
Uh, yes.
All right. Approval to apply for the ship rent of eleven thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy cents.
Which is no match. This is to help our seniors fill out their insurance paperwork and stuff like that.
Got much to approve that.
Second.
Do I have a second, on paper? Approval, approve the amended order adopting the final uniform schedule of values.
If you'll recall, we had to rerun it in the paper and the amended one. If you'll recall, we had to rerun it in the paper, and the amended one is at the desk. We just need an approval, a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve this schedule of values.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second? On paper? And we have an invitation to the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Campaign January 18th at 10:00 a.m.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, or is that?
I've got it in the packet.
And that the booze is to lose it?
Yes, booze it to lose it. I think it's in the back of your, in the back of the packet.
All right.
Exactly.
And?
It's not a kit.
I can close the discussion items, we've got one item for other business. If you would, we've got an SS Laker quote for, I've all filled lots. Ronnie's been working on this for a while sometime. He's got money in his capital outlay, but Becky mentioned pulling that money from Arpa money. It's whatever the pleasure of the board is. You want to have some discussion on that? Ronnie can save his capital outlay for another project, or he can spend it. He's got money allocated for this project, just been looking to get us a price. So now I know, since we're gonna have to pay you at night for these lots down here, pull out Arpa money or pull out his capital? Arpa money, because?
I'll tell you about that in just a minute. That's gonna be insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So either way, whatever. It's whatever the pleasure of the board is.
We can have it in Arpa, Lucy.
Yeah, this, this budget year and then last budget year, the board allocates $62,500 to be put in reserve per year. You have that available, or I was telling Commissioner Manles that because we're under the, what's it called? Sorry, my mind just went blank. We're under the, uh...
Standard.
Standard allowance, I could not come up with that name, under standard allowance. And because this is a project that would fall under general services for the county, you could pull this from Arpa money as well. So you could do, you know, inter or. If you want to save back the money for bigger projects, because the initial idea for putting that money in reserve was for part of money grant, a part of money match, then, you know, you still have that money held in reserve if you pay out Arpa.
What do you think?
We just need to, well, I mean, I'm assuming that the board's okay with the expenditure. I guess I'll take a motion to approve the expenditure and then we can help with that one.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second? On paper? All right, now, we've got a side, we've got a little bit.
Is that the little money we're doing? Tell me when.
Okay. I prefer to go ahead and go with the Arpa money, but I don't think that's a problem. It does make a difference if I, you know, free him up to spend some of his capital money and follow for other stuff.
That's my reaction, you know. Kind of what I like, thinking we're gonna try to do something for young people and be able to play.
Yep. So release from Arpa, for this expenditure from Arpa money, and that leaves Ronnie's capital money to move forward. Is that good? All right. Do you need that form of motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Do I have a motion to spend $85,275 on ball field lots for the Recreation Department and pulling that from our Arpa money? Send it. Got a motion, do I have a second? On paper? Right. I don't have anything else to rub in the business. Does anybody else? Ms. Chris? Go ahead.
Um, I did have another board. I got this this afternoon from the Nantahana Library, Director Franklin Shook wanting to inform the county commissioners that Diana McCray had resigned her position, and he has spoken with Mayor Sean Adams, who wishes to apply for the vacant position. If, if you're okay with Sean Adams being on the library board, or if you want to hold and have some further discussion, either way. This just came in at 2:55 p.m. today.
And who sent it to you?
Uh, Franklin Shook. He's our, he's the director, regional director.
Lynn, do you have any background on any of that?
Will, will he be serving on like the trustees board?
Mm-hmm. The one that Raymond, you know, we always appoint two. We always have a commissioner and then one more.
Do you want to give it some thought, table it, or do you feel okay to move forward?
Let me contact him and I'll talk to him about that position and stuff. So we'll talk about that decision.
I appreciate that, Lynn, thank you.
All right, the next thing is, we had a vehicle that Harold Millsacks drives, you know, he has to have it pulled up Longmore's to this Charahela, over the mountain, over to do all of those things. Short, short and sweet, if it's, if it is, it'll be $3,577.02. If they get in there and requires a little bit more, worst case scenario is $5,155.97. I would ask the board to approve the $5,000 and hope for the three.
And this is for?
This is for the Chevrolet that Harold Millsacks, our grounds director, drives.
This used to be an ambulance.
Yeah, it used to be an ambulance.
Patrick Miles, I'll make the motion that we do that.
I've got a motion. Is there any discussion? I have a second. All right. You have much in the second, on paper?
Okay, the next one, we had a, I had a call from Frank Klein today with the North Carolina Forest Service Office, and they have two trailers that they wanted to give to the Graham County Fire Department. They get first choice before it goes to Swain County and then to Haywood County. They take the oldest fire department that's registered in these, in their district. And so they get the first choice. So if Commissioner Eller wants to have the two trailers that I have pictures of, that would be your first choice, and we would make a motion to accept those on behalf of the fire department.
Are you familiar with them, Keith?
Well, my little brain's working anyway. I don't know, I don't know the reason I need a truck.
Okay.
I mean, I'm trying to think about the other departments, whether there's any reason I love you, you used to have a Ford Capgate system that turned on a truck. And I don't even like that you did before.
What kind of trailers?
They're, they're, they're open, there's, they're box papers. One of them's a black one, and one of them's a red one. But they have used, I'm assuming, to haul equipment to the fires.
That one's been used for our...
Yeah, it's been given to the fire department and they turn it back in.
Okay.
That's, that's reasonable. It's up for...
Go ahead, Lynn, now go ahead and let Swain County.
I don't know, do you think?
No, we got, we got, it's got all our trail stuff on it, so we don't know. It's just something else we'll have to clutter or something.
We've got, the rescue squad's got one up there, been sitting there since we've bought it, been pulled very few times, got swept water years up there. The EMS has got three or four, twenty of them emergency managers.
Oh, okay.
They have a fire. Els Department's got two.
Would the school have any need for them, like with band equipment or anything like that?
Hi.
Well, I know they do have it, a trailer, but I just wondered if the band might need them for, to haul their equipment, or the school might pay them for anything?
I don't think we can do that.
It's got to be a little fire.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
So we don't, we're good then?
Yeah, I don't, I keep thinking, if I really draw the, knock off Frank.
So...
All right. The next you'll find a request for proposals from Southwest Commission, Region A. I just put that in there for your, is to create a strategic plan for the O'Yor settlement funds. That is where you're reading, favor. And then we had a little incident on the 14th, that would be Saturday night. The, I'll give the whole story, and that way you'll understand. I talked with Duke Energy today. One of Duke's power poles line hit our power pole over here at the pool, and it blew out the new lights that were installed on the tennis courts. It blew out the new cameras that have been installed. It, it actually almost caused the building to get on fire. It's like up the wall and into the ceiling. So it, it blowed holes in the bottom of the poles, the light poles, and it blew the actual bulbs completely out of the, out of the top casings. But we have holes. It, it blew a manhole cover that they had used well. So if, if somebody had been there, they would have died. Yeah, or even leaned up against our fence. So having said that, we made a little, a few calls, I think Commissioner Eller, did you go?
I remember.
And Manles? And what they had told me, they redid those lines and they put longer extension arms on it, which was maybe closer to our pole. But however, our pole sits in the Duke Energy right of way. They could come and say we would have to move our pole. But they are coming, from what I understand, to put some bracers on their pole where this wouldn't happen again to touch ours, and we could leave our pole the same.
They just later on that line was talked a lot of.
Yeah, that's what he said, the insulation. So they were gonna do that. They, they are gonna fix that part of it, but as far as Duke Energy being responsible, they're really not because it's in their right of way. If our line had been outside of their right of way, then Duke Energy would have been responsible for the damages. So I have put it into the insurance today, and I expect they'll be calling us probably tomorrow or the next day to go see what the damages are. NCACC, it's time to start looking at insurance policies, and, and we have been getting some claims. I'll get you copies of all those, kind of see where we're at. I don't see anything drastically standing out at this point. Robbinsville Middle School Open House is for January the 24th. I put that in your packets as well, and you have all been invited to attend. And then out at sanitation, we received a bad sample from our stormwater discharge at sanitation. And so what that means is we have to start doing a monthly testing instead of a quarterly testing. I'm hoping that once we get good results, that they will stop monthly. I'm not sure. They had mentioned putting a shed over top of the metal, where we store the metal. Gavin has been looking around the area, and there is one place on the other side of the trailer where they're at, where you could put the metal on the floor, crush it, and then load it into a trailer on the other side of the hill. We could just dump it off in the hill, that way it would not lay on the, on the ground runoff, yeah. So that is one, one thing that they're going to be looking at. So hopefully that will work itself out without a whole lot of cost. I don't know how soon, I think they have been working on a plan to redo some of the sanitation, I think in the past. So I haven't been party to it, but I think, and try to get some grants and stuff to help do that, because the state has made a lot of changes, which is very expensive, as you know, if it relates to garbage. So, so we will keep you informed as we go on that.
I have the Southwestern Commission, for the museum.
Yes.
Okay. You want to, you want to do that? I will. We've received for the Graham County Historical Association unappropriated funds from our representatives, Carl Gillespie, he got us some funds, and also Kevin Corby got us some funds, with the understanding that these funds pass, let's see, they pass through the Southwestern Commission, Becky straighten me out if I get off track here, and then through Graham County, and then to the Museum Association. And Becky, God bless her, has all the bullet points that have to be hit and managed to get to the end result of that. And I believe you are working with the Museum Association?
Yes.
Right now, and I thank you for that very much. So it is well underway, and we just need to get a motion to approve the pass-through fund, pass-through Graham County to go to the museum. And I will make the motion for the pass-through funds. I believe it is 50?
50,000.
50,000. For those 150, yeah. 150,000 dollars passed through to the Graham County Museum Association.
Any discussion? Do I have a second? On paper?
And this is common practice in all the North Carolina counties.
They're all doing it. And so in that regard, that motion, I need also a motion to do another budget amendment that'll be budget amendment number 11 to reflect, and I'm gonna try to print this off on the break, to reflect the pass-through. And then I would also need a motion to, for approval of me to cut the check, because it exceeds my spending limit. And like I said, I'll, I'll print this off, and that way the board can sign all of this.
I will make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 11 for 50,000 dollars, and then I will make a motion that...
Do you want to vote on that? Of course I want to. I've got a motion, I've got a motion for the Budget Amendment Number 11 for 50,000. Do I have a second? Second. On paper?
Then I will make a motion that Becky be authorized to cut a check for 50,000 dollars to the Graham County Historical Association.
Do I have a second? On paper?
And one last thing, you have your capital projects manager report. I don't see anything, he didn't say anything that you needed to approve. We will be discussing an item enclosed regarding the contract, and we will call that gentleman on the phone. But so far, we'll make it strides with the recreation and the cemetery building, order them a desk and a chair today for the cemetery building, so they'll have a place to go to. I'm, I'm very happy and excited to see these new buildings going out of town.
We've been very patient.
They have been very patient.
Just three seconds. All right. Do I have a motion to, during closed session, P S 143 318, 1181356, privileged or confidential?